My name is Rich Gordon and I'm a member of the California State Assembly. And I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague from the California State Senate, Jerry Hill. Senator Hill and I are pleased to welcome you to this forum on the Affordable Care Act and Covered California. Before we begin and go any further, Iris Bazan, could you please make an announcement?
So if there's any need in translation to Spanish, we will be out in the lobby. Thank you.
Iris, thank you. Let me thank all of you for being here this morning. This has been an exciting and historic week for health care in our country and in our state. Health care reform fulfills a long sought-after dream in our nation as we expand access to affordable, quality health care. The Affordable Care Act ensures that hard-working, middle-class families will get the security they deserve, and it protects every American from the worst of insurance company abuse. When fully implemented, the Affordable Care Act will expand affordable coverage to nearly 5 million Californians. California's new insurance marketplace, known as Covered California, has been a great success, where 5 million page views were made on their website by 3:00 PM on the first day that it was open. Today's event is an opportunity to hear from the experts on health care reform on how to navigate California's health care marketplace. We have representatives from state and county government, as well as nonprofits. All of these folks have advocated tirelessly for health care reform, and they're here today to answer your questions. Our goal is that when you leave here today, you've got enough information to make informed decisions about your health care. Let me be very clear. We are not going to be enrolling individuals today under the Affordable Care -- Health Care Act. However, we are fortunate to have California -- Covered California experts standing by to help you get started so that when you get home, you can begin the process should you desire to enroll. This is really the starting line, not the finish line, for those who are seeking health care coverage through Covered California. Today, you'll hear -- have an opportunity to learn the basics. You'll have an opportunity to enroll over the next several months, but we want to make sure that you understand your options, your choices, and can make the best informed decisions for you. With that, let me ask my colleague, Senator Hill, if he would like to make some welcoming comments, and then we'll get right to the program.
Thank you, Assemblymember Gordon. And it is a pleasure to be in Mountain View this morning, and it's also a pleasure to discuss the Covered California and the Affordable Care Act. I can't tell you how I have gained so much knowledge by having and conducting the forums as we have, because there are a lot of questions. And the way we get those questions answered is by having the people here that know the answers and can do it well. And thank you for coming to the event this morning to learn what you can about the act. This morning, I held a kind of a coffee down at Dana's -- Dana Street Roasting Company, where we discussed a wide variety of issues. But one of the things that my biggest takeaway from that was that Mountain View is one of the most closely knit and well-informed and engaged communities that I know. And I think this is reflected today in the people who are here. And that's important as we look at sharing the word and the information from today with, as Rich was talking about, the 7 million or so uninsured Californians with the beginning of open enrollment. They now have the opportunity to enroll in health care coverage, which they have not been able to before. And small businesses can also provide coverage for their employees where they have been kind of challenged in the past. Knowledge is power. And with the speakers that we have today, they will be able to provide that information. And those critical dates, October 1st to March 1st of 2014, we have to get as many of our friends and family members to enroll. To be covered as of January 1st, 2013, and I'm sure we'll hear it, you have to be -- you have to purchase by December 15th of 2013. By the end of 2014, Covered California's goal is to have insured approximately 1 million in California -- of Californians through Medi-Cal, and between 840,000 and 1,200,000 for premium insurance plans. That's a -- that's a big goal, but with your help, we'll get there, and we can provide that health care for everyone who needs it in the future. I wanted to just take a moment. There are a couple of elected officials and people who have given their time to serve our communities in the audience. John Radford from Los Altos Hills is here. John, thank you for being here. Rod Zinks in the City Council of Cupertino. Rod, thanks. And Jim Davis from the City of Sunnyvale is here. Thank you for joining us this morning and for your interest, and I know continued interest in health care. So thank you for coming, and we should get started.
Thank you, Jerry. Our first presenter this morning is Anthony Wright. Anthony is the Executive Director of Health Access California. He has served as the Executive Director of this organization, which is a statewide health care consumer advocacy coalition for over a decade. Health Access has led state and national efforts to win consumer protections, fight budget cuts, and invest in our safety net. Wright led California's coalition effort to help pass the Affordable Care Act and state laws to implement and improve it. He's also led campaigns to successfully pass the first-in-the-nation laws to ensure timely access to care and to stop hospital overcharging of the uninsured. Join me in welcoming Anthony Wright.
So thank you very much. Again, my name is Anthony Wright. I'm the Executive Director of Health Access California. We're the statewide consumer advocacy coalition, working for 25 years on the goal of quality, affordable health care for all Californians. I want to thank very much Assemblymember Gordon and Senator Hill for not only inviting me, but for their work on the really important work of implementing this law and making sure that it works on the ground. And that's actually a very remarkable thing to talk about. For a long time, organizations like mine have been talking about the promise of health reform or the prospects of health reform, but actually talking about it on the ground and making it real in terms of what actual specific benefits are -- that people can take advantage of isn't an exciting moment in our -- in our state's and nation's history. I want to remind folks about why this was -- why this was important. Why did we have this long debate that continues to rage in Washington, DC? And it's because very -- so many people have had situations where they have had problems getting access to the care and coverage that they need, especially here in California. Californians are more likely to be uninsured than residents of most other states, except for a handful, more likely to not get coverage at work, more likely to not be able to afford coverage when buying it as an individual, more likely to be denied coverage for pre-existing conditions than residents of a handful -- than all but residents of a handful of states. It's a -- and so, these are particularly the issues that are addressed, not only for the 7 million people who happen to be uninsured at this particular moment, but for any of us as we go through the life changes of changing jobs or changing our marital status or moving or any of the other situations that we may find ourselves in. So this was a really big deal when the Affordable Care Act was passed. It was a -- it was a big deal, and it was a big deal in three big ways. It was the biggest thing that Congress has ever done in three specific categories. Number one, it was the biggest way where people -- it was the biggest thing that Congress has ever done to provide new consumer protections for consumers dealing with their insurance company. Traditionally, that had been something that had been left to the states. This puts a new federal cop in the beat so that there are, you know, not only no longer being able to be denied for pre-existing conditions, but no longer can women be charged differently from men, no longer do you have exclusions or caps on your coverage so that you can be left with tens of thousands of dollars of bills after you've been paying premiums, you know, no longer could you have your insurance yanked away from you from a rescinded, you know, just a range of new consumer protections. Second big thing that it did is it -- was the biggest thing that Congress has ever done to try to secure coverage for people who have it and expand it for those who don't since the creation of Medicaid and Medicare in 45 years ago. And then, third, it was the biggest effort at trying to reduce the cost and improve the quality of health care through a variety of efforts, whether it's investments in prevention to having reforms in the way that care is delivered. In each of these, number one, I recognize that when I say biggest thing Congress has ever done, that we're grading on the curve of Congress. But we should just recognize that history, recognize that -- and, you know, as an advocate, there were areas where I would have preferred it to go further, areas where I preferred it to go different, but we should recognize the significant step that it did in each of these three areas. So there's a range of things -- when people talk about the Affordable Care Act, there's a range of things that are already in place now. New protections with regard to -- with regard to the coverage that you have, new protection -- new access to coverage, like, for example, young adults being able to stay on their parents' coverage up to age 26. Over 400,000 Californians are taking advantage of that one provision right now, already. There is new help for financial assistance, whether if you're a senior getting help with your prescription drugs, or whether you're a small business perhaps getting help with a tax credit to be able to better afford coverage for your workers. I want to focus on a little bit on what California has done, however, to not just implement, but improve the law so that -- to make it more real for on-the-ground here in California. We did a study earlier this year that showed that actually there are millions of people taking advantage of those new consumer protections. There's millions of people who are taking advantage of new financial assistance, including, for example, people who have -- Californians have saved over $300 million in reduced or retracted rate increases because of new rate review authority that the ACA provided and that the state implemented under laws passed in 2010. But something that's remarkable is that actually there are now, today, over 1 million people who are now getting coverage as a result of the law, not in 2014, today. And that's through not only the young adults up to age 26. That's not just for 20,000 folks who've been denied for pre-existing conditions, who are in a special program that's a bridge until 2014. But there's now 700,000 folks in county-based low-income health programs that are an early expansion of Medicaid, that folks who are now getting coverage in systems of care, getting basic health coverage, and who will be transferred into full Medi-Cal coverage, that newly expanded Medi-Cal coverage on January 1, 2014. And so that's -- I do want, again, credit the leadership of our legislature, including Assemblymember Gordon and Senator Hill, in working to put forward these types of policies so that we can try to maximize the benefit for California for a health care system that so desperately needs it. We're really -- California should be proud of what we've done to take those additional steps so that we can take advantage of those benefits, and not just -- not just as much, but also early. Some other things that we did here in California is that we adopted some of the essential benefit standards early. So, for example, maternity coverage, something that was -- was -- is going to be a basic benefit in 2014, is now already in place and was in place 18 months early in California. Why? Because it was disappearing from the individual market. 10 years ago, if you were trying to buy coverage as an individual, 80% of the plans had maternity coverage in it. Last year, it was down to 13%. But as of July, it was now a basic benefit that all coverage will include maternity coverage as a basic benefit. That's something that we did here in California. Another thing we did is we made sure that children with pre-existing conditions could get coverage early and at a more affordable price. We are -- so we're very -- so, again, here in California, while the -- while DC is talking shut down, we're talking start up. We're trying to get a lot of things moving forward. So let me just, in my -- in just a few more minutes, let me just provide a broad overview, and I know that my colleagues on this panel will fill in the details, not only about the work that counties have done with regard to these low-income health programs and Medi-Cal expansion, but also the work of Covered California. But I want to give you a framework by which to view all these different changes, which is, right now, the way the world works now is that there's basically three ways that you get health care coverage. About half of us in California get coverage through an employer, through ourselves or through a family member. About a third of us get help through a public program, Medicare, or for those -- for some populations under the poverty level, Medi-Cal. And then, the rest of us are then left to try to buy coverage as an individual, although the vast majority of those end up becoming uninsured. Those are the -- those are the ways. And so, the point of the Affordable Care Act is that in each of these three ways, there are improvements to try to make coverage more available, more affordable, to provide some basic security of benefits and consumer protections, and the power of group purchasing. So if you're -- if you have employer-based coverage, which I presume a majority of folks in this room do, because that would be equivalent with the state as a whole, there's not much is going to change, because most of those changes have already happened. There is some encouragement for employers to continue to provide coverage. So I mentioned again, small businesses under 50 have no requirement to have coverage, but they do have a tax credit that they can choose to take advantage of if they are small and have a low-wage workforce, so that they could better afford to provide coverage. Those over 50 will have a assessment -- have to pay an assessment if they don't provide coverage and their workers end up going into this new exchange that Drew will talk about. So it's an encouragement for them to provide coverage. Again, most employers provide coverage in order to attract and retain workers with no requirement whatsoever. That's expected to continue, but there are these carrots and sticks to try to encourage to continue that, and there's some new consumer protections in terms of the benefits provided, et cetera. The -- for Medicare, again, not much will change, because some of those changes have already happened. Your benefits are -- have been improved in two big ways. Number one, the prescription drug benefit, which used to have a donut hole in it where it ran out around $2,000 and it didn't kick back in until $5,000, that's being closed over the next several years, so that you have better prescription drug coverage if you're on Medicare. If -- the other big change is the free -- no-cost sharing for preventative care, which is actually not just in Medicare, but in all private plans, so that now you have an access to a range of preventative services without having to pay a co-pay, because that's the kind of service that we want to encourage, and we don't want to put a financial barrier between you and the ability to get that service. And so then, the big -- the -- in Medi-Cal, the big change is that it -- there's a dramatic -- some improvement, actually, an improvement that was passed by the state legislature with regard to restoring dental benefits, which were cut in 2009 during our very critical budget crisis, as well as some improvement in mental health and substance abuse. But the big change is that it's -- it will be a program that will be expanded so that it's not just for children and parents and seniors and people with disabilities, but for everybody who's a legal resident under 133% of the poverty level, which is about $12,000 for an individual, $22,000 for a family of four. So the idea here is that if you are under that -- it's now a safety net, so that if you're between jobs, if you're in a rough situation, that is now available for -- that is now available as a place to get some basic coverage in that period. The other thing is that it will be easier to get on and stay on Medi-Cal, because we're going to -- because what was passed in the legislature was a number of efforts to streamline and simplify the process of getting onto Medi-Cal. And so then, that leaves, obviously, the people who buy coverage as individuals. And the -- the -- this is the area where there is the biggest change. So I mentioned how most of the changes have happened already in the employer and market and with public programs, but the big changes are in the individual market, because that's where the biggest problems were. That's where individuals were left all alone at the mercy of the big insurers. They could be denied for pre-existing conditions. They had no market power. It was literally the least efficient, most expensive way to try to buy coverage. And so that's where Covered California comes in to provide new and affordable options, and it will provide three big benefits for people. Number one, it will provide -- and the one that I think gets the most attention, it will provide financial help, so that if you're under four times the poverty level, which is about $45,000 a year for an individual or $90,000 for a family of four, you will get help so that you don't have to pay more than a certain percentage of your income for basic coverage. So it's a sliding scale from 2 to 9.5%. So that means that if your premium is more than that, you will get a subsidy to make up the difference for a basic silver-level plan. So think about this in terms of just the dramatic moment this is. We are moving from a world where you pay now based on how sick you are, if you can get it at all, to a world where you pay based on what you can afford as a percentage of income. That's transformational in terms of people's ability to be able to access coverage. The other two benefits that Covered California will provide is that it will be much easier to compare plans, because there will be plans that actually are standardized for benefits and for cost sharing, so you can actually make an apples-to-apples comparisons between the Health Net and Kaiser and Anthem Blue Cross plans. And you will also have the benefit of the Covered California negotiating on your behalf. It will -- right now, as an individual, you have no market power, but Covered California, which will have a couple of million people, can urge the insurers to get me a better value. And that's something that you can't do as an individual if you called Anthem Blue Cross and said, "Hey, can I get a better deal?" Probably not going to happen as well. So that's the promise. I know Drew from Covered California will talk more about the details of selecting that, but that gives you a sense of the benefits. And so, let me stop there. I'm more than happy to take questions after the -- as we go into panel, but just here's the clear thing. If you are insured, you don't have to change anything. It's more likely that your employer will continue to provide coverage. It improves Medicare and expands Medicaid. It fixes the individual market, and it makes it more likely you will have access in those life changes where you might lose coverage. But if you are not insured, you do need to get coverage or pay a penalty, but the idea is that it will try to make it more available, more affordable, more adequate, and more administratively simple. And that's what we're going to talk about today. Thank you very much.
Anthony, thank you. Before I ask my colleague Senator Hill to introduce our next speaker, let me just say that we are going to take questions. We'll do that at the end, after all the panelists have spoken. And we would ask you to write your question on an index card. There should have been one left at your place. If you don't have one, raise your hand, we'll get one to you. If you -- if you've completed a question and want to raise -- hold it up, we'll make sure that staff come around and pick it up. We'll collect those and try to get to as many questions as possible. Jerry?
Thank you, Rich, very much. And Anthony, thank you for that presentation. I'd like to now introduce Carrie Sanders, who is the Director of Policy Analysis at the California Pan-Ethnic Health Network. Carrie worked as a policy analyst for the California Immigrant Policy Center before, and she's worked as Assistant Policy Director for SEIU, United Healthcare Workers West, representing over 150,000 health care workers in California. And as a policy director for services, she's had great experience and looking forward to her presentation. Carrie, welcome.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me if I stand? Does that work? Great. So Anthony went over, I think, a lot of the basics of the Affordable Care Act. I'm just going to fill in or try to fill in some of the other areas. A little bit about us, though, the California Pan-Ethnic Health Network, we were formed about 20 years ago, four ethnic groups, the Asian Pacific Islander American Health Forum, the Latino Coalition for Healthy California, the California Black Health Network, and the California Rural Indian Health Board. And I really wanted to thank both the Assemblymember and the Senator for inviting us here today and for all their hard work to make this a reality. You know, we're -- we work a lot on eliminating health disparities. That is our mission. And one of the biggest ways that we do that is through really working on access, increasing access to health insurance. And when you look at, you know, currently, who's uninsured, a disproportionate number of the uninsured are communities of color. And so, by virtue of that, they really will be a huge percentage or proportion of those who will be able to get coverage under the Affordable Care Act moving forward. Other thing really important to note is that of those newly eligible, a third will speak English less than very well. So we have a new landscape of newly eligible that we have to be thinking about as we talk about the benefits of this new law and as we try to encourage folks to take advantage of this. So if you look at some of the languages, Spanish is, you know, clearly the top language, but we also have Cantonese, Vietnamese, Korean, Tagalog. And as folks I know from this area know, you know, we're -- this is a very diverse county that we live in, and, you know, a lot of the folks who will be newly eligible may not have had health insurance before, may not really be familiar with a lot of these new systems, you know, and trying to help them to connect with coverage is going to be very important. So a couple of things on the Medi-Cal expansion, and then I'll go into the Covered California. But we did pass Medi-Cal expansion bills this year and again, thanks to the Senator and Assemblymember for their work. But we expand Medi-Cal to childless adults. And that's huge, because basically, anyone, if you are low-income now, regardless of, you know, whether you're a parent, a single adult, a child, et cetera, you can access public support if you need that for you and your family. It also allows former foster youth to stay in Medi-Cal. There are more comprehensive benefits, so includes mental health, excuse me, and mental health and substance abuse services, as well as the dental -- adult dental services, which were restored. And then, there's also just a simpler way to be able to get onto programs, by making it easier to look at income and to help connect people and help people renew in an easier way. There are some great benefits for immigrants as well, so I think Anthony touched on that. But essentially, the message is that if you're a low-income immigrant, you're also going to be able to get health insurance, whether through Medi-Cal or through Covered California. And there are lots of different ways that that will happen. But California, in the way that we chose to do our expansion, really took into account who are the currently uninsured and how can we really leverage our power, you know, as a state, to really bring everybody into health insurance. So moving on to Covered California, we see the same pattern. The, you know, a huge proportion of newly eligible will also be communities of color, 66%, 1.8 million. And again, about a third will speak English less than very well. So we're looking, again, at Spanish, Mandarin and Cantonese, Vietnamese, Tagalog and Korean. And, you know, we know, we've been working with Covered California to really try to encourage and make sure that the outreach and the education and enrollment is really targeted to those communities who will have difficulty navigating without translation or interpretation. So, you know, Anthony talked about, you know, what is the new health benefit exchange. Biggest takeaway is, you know, if you are in between 133 to 400%, or that's about $90,000 for a family of four, you may be able to get a subsidy or subsidized help in the -- in Covered California, which is huge. So, you know, this is going to be -- this is going to make health insurance so much more accessible to individuals who, you know, previously had to purchase it on their own without any assistance at all. You know, in terms of the kinds of coverage, you know, Anthony talked a lot about setting the floor and making coverage more comprehensive, but the Affordable Care Act actually makes it so that all health insurance has to include these basic -- these 10 benefits. So, you know, from now, in the new world, as you're looking at health plans, instead of making, you know, apples-to-orange comparisons, we're really looking at apples-to-apples. Every single plan has to provide maternity. Every single plan has to provide prescription drug benefits. Every plan has to provide preventative and wellness and chronic disease management. So all plan -- everything that you're looking at, it has to provide you with those same benefits. A lot of people ask about the metal tiers, and I think, you know, Drew's going to cover that in more detail. But important, you know, I know it's maybe confusing for folks who are trying to figure this out. The important thing to note is that, you know, premium assistance that's available in Covered California is based off of the Silver Plan. So you have -- there's four different levels, but Silver is actually the best, you know, in terms of all of the studies and the actuarial analyses that have been done, that is really, you know, where the biggest value is for folks. And what that looks like is, and this is just a sample, but if you, you know, for example, if you qualify for, say, $250 off of your premium, you know, based on your income level, you will, you know, if you go with the various plans, the way it works is the higher the premium that you're paying, the lower the co-pay. But once you get to Silver, it's sort of about, you know, say, it's $40 per visit, but it's cheaper. It's a cheaper but it's cheaper, it's a cheaper premium, and you're actually, with the premium assistance, only paying, say, $150. So, you're actually getting the best value, if you think about it, by going with that Silver Plan, which also allows you to take advantage of some of the cost benefit, I mean, the cost-sharing subsidies that are available through Covered California as well. So, in terms of language access, we talked a lot about, you know, who's eligible by language. And, you know, we're really proud to say and to thank, you know, Covered California as, you know, real partners, working with us to make sure that the exchange is accessible. There will be translated applications and materials available in 13 different languages, which is really exciting for California. Oral interpretation is available on their hotline in all languages, so regardless of what language, you know, you speak, if you need assistance by phone, you can call that 800 number. In addition to that, they have dedicated 800 numbers that are actually based on those 13 languages that we mentioned that are the threshold languages. They're the languages that are most commonly spoken in California. And so, you'll be able to call a number, and instead of having to, you know, push, you know, wait for your language to hear your language, you'll be able to speak directly with someone who's bilingual who'll be able to help you. The other, and as part of that, Covered California has said that they do intend to hire bilingual customer service representatives, as, you know, they can, to be able to man these phone lines. We also have, you know, as part of the application form, there'll be collection of race, ethnicity, primary language data, and that type of data will be helpful, I think, both for us, you know, advocates, but also for those providing services, to understand how different communities access services and benefits, how are they getting to the, to Covered California, are there barriers that they're facing, and how can we try to combat those barriers that everyone can get covered? And then, finally, after the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to talk to some of the educators, the Certified Educators with Covered California. But there's also in-person assistance that's going to be available in multi, in many languages, which is very exciting as well, so that if people, you know, aren't comfortable talking on the phone or applying online, they'll be able to actually speak to someone in their language. Hopefully, you can help them enroll into coverage. So, you know, we're at a very exciting time right now. There are a lot of transitions, there's a lot of outreach that needs to happen. There are actually about a half a million people who are currently insured through their health, their current health plans, who are, who may be eligible for subsidies in Covered California. So, that is a huge transition that needs to happen, and hopefully, you know, we know the health plans have started notifying some of their enrollees, they can take advantage of that. But there actually are people who are currently insured who may be able to take advantage of these new subsidies. We also heard about the pre-existing condition plan for folks with high risk, you know, with chronic conditions. Those folks will be able to go into the exchange. The low-income health plan here in this county, in San Mateo County, there are enrollees in that program who will go into Covered California or into Medi-Cal, depending on their income. And there are lots of other, you know, newly eligible folks who will be able to get into coverage. So, there's a lot to do, there's a lot of work to do in the next few months to really help connect these folks to coverage. And, you know, all that to say that there are lots of, there are different ways where you, you know, places to go to get assistance. In person, as we mentioned, Covered California has trained certified enrollment entities that will be able to help people apply for coverage. And I just, just talking with Drew, it sounds like the list, there is a list that's now available if you go onto the website, the Covered California website, and, you know, it will be updated, so, you know, if it's not there yet, I'm sure it will be soon, but where you'll be able to find, you know, who your local, what local organizations are working in your area, who can help you apply. There's also a listing of health centers that the California Endowment has put together, and health centers are also big partners in trying to get people enrolled. And you can go onto that, onto the Get Covered California website to get information about that. On the phone, there's an 800 number, and again, online, the Covered California website, coveredca.com, you know, is a great source of information, and you can also enroll personally. You don't have to, you know, if you don't need assistance, you can get, you can enroll as an individual online. So, you know, I hope this is helpful. You know, we're happy to, you know, connect with you as an organization, to give you information. We do have alerts that we provide, and we have resources and information that we get out. So, you know, happy to continue to give you, to provide you with information, and I'll turn it over to our next speaker. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Now, we'll turn to someone from Covered California. Drew Kyler earned his degree from UC Davis and currently serves as the Associate Government Analyst at Covered California, and he will talk about some of the more specific details.
Great. Thank you, guys, very much. I'm a pretty loud talker, so I think I'm going to be okay. Can you guys hear me? Yes, I want to start by thanking the Assembly Member and the Senator for having me here today. I'd like you, guys, all to give yourselves a round of applause, too. Thank you, guys, for coming to learn more today. Ms. Sanders and Mr. Wright have done a great job of framing this, so I will be able to go through this pretty quickly, and then we can get to Q and A. As has been mentioned, Covered California is the online marketplace where you can go to shop and compare for coverage that's available to you and then purchase coverage. This has pretty much been touched on, but a few of the reasons why folks don't have insurance. We know people don't have insurance, and the reason is not because they don't want it, they do. I'd like to start here with just a little anecdotal story. When my sister turned 24, she didn't have health insurance. She had, she was a college student full-time, had been an athlete her whole life, dancer, cheerleader, softball player, and the such. She had had a minor knee surgery when she was in high school. She applied for insurance at the age of 24 and was denied for a pre-existing condition, the condition being that knee surgery. And I think we all know people, whether they be ourselves or people in our communities and our families and our neighborhoods, that have endured this. And so, one of the big things I feel that the Affordable Care Act has done for us is made it so no longer can you be denied coverage for a pre-existing condition. This is really huge, and I think we all know people, yes. Thank you. We think this is a big step. Also, rates not based on health status, so health insurance companies can no longer charge you more because you're sick, which doesn't make sense, right? So, this is really important. The law requires large employers to offer coverage, as I know was mentioned, I think we all have probably heard in the news, that's been delayed until 2015, but still a big step. These are the 10 essential health benefits that I know have already been described by two of our panelists. What's just important to note here is no matter where you buy your insurance, and there's a lot of options for you, you will always have these 10 things covered. These are the things that every insurance plan must have, that makes sense, right? These are things that we cannot do without if we're paying for our health insurance. Covered California is looking at reaching about 5.3 million Californians. 2.6 are available to receive that subsidy. That is that financial leg up to help you be able to afford your health insurance, and that's a really big deal. Also, those 2.7 million Californians who would not benefit from that financial leg up, but would definitely benefit from shopping in the exchange with the rates that we've negotiated. And here at the bottom, 1.4 million Californians who are newly eligible for Medi-Cal through the expansion. Covered California has a Small Business Health Options Program that we refer to as SHOP. It's an opportunity for employers with 50 or less employees to offer not only coverage to their employees, but coverage that comes with plan choice. So, oftentimes, in the small business market right now, folks offer coverage, but it's one plan, like you get Kaiser. Now, an employer would be able to select a metal tier that I'll describe in a little bit, and then the employee would be able to choose the health plan that they want that fits their family best. And so, that's really great. There are tax credits available, and we could get into that a little bit more. So, basically, what does Covered California have to do to be successful? Well, there's three sort of pillars, and I'm going to hit them all. The first is affordable health plans. The second is effective outreach and marketing, and the third is smooth enrollment. These are the 12 health plans that are offered through Covered California. What I always like to point out here is that these are brand-name coverage. So, this is not government insurance. The Covered California is the marketplace that's offering insurance companies that you're going to recognize. Anthem Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Health Net, Kaiser, these are the plans that are offering insurance in the exchange. There's also listed there five dental plans. Those are pediatric dental plans. Pediatric dental is one of the 10 essential health benefits. It's important to note that Covered California is working very hard to bring adult dental into the picture in 2015. So, what does it take to make healthcare affordable? Well, premium assistance for that monthly out-of-pocket expense is also, is obviously very important, but also important to note that there are out-of-pocket expense legs up. So, based on your income, and this is on a sliding scale, not only will you get assistance in your monthly premium, which you have to pay out-of-pocket every month to have your insurance, but also the cost that you would pay when you go to the doctor. We talk a lot about the federal poverty limit, or FPL, and people's eyes roll back in their head, mine including, right? This chart right here gives you a little bit of an idea of what that means for you. So, if you are a family of four, making between $0 and about $32,500, you would be Medi-Cal eligible, where from that $32.5 to $94,000, you would be eligible for a subsidy in the exchange. So, I think everyone can kind of look at this chart, find out their family size and where their income is, and have an idea of what they may qualify for. I know that Carrie talked a little bit about the metal tiers. The idea, basically, with the metal tiers is this, you have four options for the richness of the coverage that you purchase. So, if you purchase a platinum plan, you're going to pay more every month in premiums out-of-pocket, but you're going to pay less when you go to the doctor. So, when you receive your services, they will be less. Conversely, if you chose a silver or a bronze plan, your monthly out-of-pocket is going to be much lower, but when you go to see a doctor, it's going to be, you will have a greater out-of-pocket expense. And to illustrate that, Covered California has standardized benefits. What this means is that if you, I'll use silver as an example, if you choose a silver plan, and it doesn't matter what silver plan you choose, and you go to the doctor for a primary care visit, your cost is going to be $45. Does that make sense? No matter what plan you choose, $45. Additionally, at an unsubsidized rate, your maximum out-of-pocket would be $6,350. Now, a lot of folks would say, well, and just to look at that, if you were choosing a platinum plan, as an example, your primary care visit copay would only be $20. So, we see how that works. We're going to have a higher monthly out-of-pocket, but when we go to see the doctor, we're going to pay less. And also, our max out-of-pocket is going to be $4,000 at that platinum level. A lot of folks think, though, gosh, $45 to go see the doctor at that silver level, that could be a deterrent to care, it could be expensive, right? So, the government has taken it one step further. This shows the silver plan only through the different income ranges. So, if I'm making between $15,856 and $17,235, my primary care visit is going to be $3. See how that works? Yes, we're getting some nodding heads. We think that's the cost of a bus ticket, and we know that's not going to be a deterrent to care. Also, that max out-of-pocket is $2,250. Don't get me wrong, I think $2,250 is a lot of money. But what is important to note is that if you go skiing in December and you break your leg in half, the maximum you're going to pay is that $2,250 in that income range. And what I think is really important to know is that in the, in the United States, healthcare-related bankruptcy is the number-one cause of bankruptcy. It's number one. So, while some of these figures are expensive, they, we feel as though they're manageable to make sure that you don't have a bankruptcy situation because you need healthcare, right? Yes, good for you, guys. Rates are based on three things now, age, ZIP code, so where you live depends on, varies how much you pay because the costs of services are different, depending on where you live in the state, and your household size and income. That fourth factor is going to be based on you, so the plan and benefit level that you select. Health costs are no longer based on your health status, on your gender, so no longer is being a woman more expensive medically than being a man, and this is a huge thing in our country. No pre-existing conditions and no tobacco use. Those things will not be taken into account when you purchase your health insurance. I want to give you just a couple of quick examples to see how this works in real life. Oscar lives in Santa Clara. He's 25 years old and makes $22,000 a year. Please note, Oscar's not a real person, but we'll talk about him like he is. These are the plans that Oscar would have available to him. Anthem Blue Cross, two Anthem Blue Crosses, a PPO, an HMO, Blue Shield, Health Net, Kaiser, Valley Health Plan. His unsubsidized premium would range between $267 and $304. Now, a lot of people think that's pretty expensive, right? It's a monthly cost. The federal government is going to write a $162 check to the health plan of his choice, so his out-of-pocket expense is going to come down to between $106 and $142 a month. And that silver-level plan is really a great richness level for a young individual like Oscar, who may need to go see the doctor periodically. I would like to note that Oscar could choose a bronze plan and pay as little as $38 a month. The Taylor family, another quick example, two kids, married, $65,000 a year. These are the plans they would see, somewhere between $1,000 to $1,200 out-of-pocket. The federal government would write a $564 monthly check to the health plan of their choice, and then these would be the plans and the monthly premiums that they would pay based on that. Doing okay so far? Okay, a little bit about marketing and outreach, this is our second pillar. Covered California is working hard to get the message out. We have created a community outreach network, so community-based organizations can partner with us to learn about Covered California, to be trained, and then to be out in the communities telling folks about the opportunities that are available inside the exchange. I also want to note, and I think someone's going to mention earlier, we awarded about $40 million in grant funding to community-based organizations to do outreach. One of our certified educators is out in the lobby today, so on your way out, if you have any additional questions that we can't get, I'd encourage you to stop by there, pick up some collateral material, and talk to those folks. Just a quick example of some of the collateral material we have available. I couldn't be more excited about this part. By a show of hands, has anyone seen a commercial on TV for Covered California? Just a couple. They started on October 1st. These are an opportunity to talk about the ways in which you can get more information on TV. We're also going to be in newspapers, we're on the radio. On October 1st, which is the day we opened our doors, I got in my car about 7:30 in the morning, turned it on on the radio, the ad was a Covered California ad. Really important that people understand where they can go to get more information. So, we're going to be not only in communities, but on media that you would be familiar with. My boss likes to say, "You will never see us on the Super Bowl, but you probably will see us in your favorite telenovela," right? So, we're doing, we're doing marketing that is consistent with our demographics. A little bit about smooth enrollment, the place to go, the number-one place to go is coveredca.com. This is a place where you can not only, without giving any personal information, answer four easy questions and see what health plans are available to you in your area and the amount of assistance that you would be able to receive. I encourage everyone on their phone, on their tablet, we have a Covered CA, or Covered California app that you can download now to give you that information, but to visit the website. In addition to the website, I know everyone's talked about the phone number, but the 1-800-315-06, a really, really great way to call, have your questions answered. You can apply over the phone with one of our customer service representatives, and they're really great. You can still mail or fax in your application. There are paper applications available if you want to do that. We've certified about 15,000 insurance agents across the state to help with enrollment, and so that's a great way to get information. We have certified enrollment counselors, as I know, as Carrie said, they are just coming online now. We're going to continue to add to that list, but you can find out more at our website or local county offices, and I know we're probably going to hear a little bit more about that today. Some things that you need to enroll, just a couple of things. You need your social security number, it's a big one. You're going to need your income information, so current income, and then also your most previous year's tax filing. Those are the documents that are going to make it easy to get through that enrollment process and find out what you qualify for. Enrollment's going to go through March 31st this year. So, I think, as the Senator mentioned, this is a starting line, certainly, not a finish line. We have six months to get information and get enrolled, but it's really important that we do it in that time. The reason I say that is, starting April 1st, guaranteed issue is not guaranteed. Guaranteed issue is only available in our open enrollment period. So, if you say, "Hey, I'm going to wait till I break that leg in half skiing," you may be in for, in for some bad news. So, you really want to make sure you take advantage of what's available in our open enrollment period. Subsequent open enrollments are between October and December, and we think this will become like April 15th. Does anyone know what that day is? Yes, I think we do. So, we know that will be the same with open enrollment for Covered California. Always good to note, Medi-Cal applications are accepted year-round. Coveredca.com is the place to go. Here is our 1-800 number. Again, I can't encourage you enough to stop by our certified educators on your way out. Thank you, guys, very much for having me, it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Drew, that was very informative. Now, we're going to take it and bring it locally to some of the issues, how it's being implemented in our counties. We have two that we'll be presenting jointly, and will be Ed Kurickson. Ed is the manager of the County of San Mateo Human Services Agency, is a manager with the County of San Mateo Human Services Agency. His current role is the Healthcare Reform Implementation Project, and he's the manager there and the call center manager. So, Ed has been working with California's Human Service Agency for a number of years, I think about eight years. And then Denise Bolin, Director of Human, Director of Employment and Benefit Services for the County of Santa Clara and the Social Services Agency. Clara and the Social Services Agency. In addition to providing oversight for all public benefits, Denise is responsible for the implementation of healthcare reform within the Social Services Agency in Santa Clara County. So welcome Denise, and welcome Ed, thank you.
Thank you. I'll start, and then I'll let my Ed help me with it. This is proof that counties can work together because we have Santa Clara and San Mateo right here with you. So if you've ever thought it didn't happen at C.
We know that, because they're two great counties, that's why.
Absolutely. So we've talked about this a little bit, and by our folks, but I want to make sure that we all recognize that we've already started healthcare way before October 1st. The counties have been hard at it for the last couple of years. One is the, already mentioned, the low-income health program. So I don't want single individuals who are eligible to think they have to wait till January. The truth is, our counties have robust low-income health programs that are currently enrolling now, and the advantages to those programs is, they will just roll seamlessly right on into Covered California programs or our programs, so it all happens at one time. In Santa Clara, we've already enrolled about twenty thousand folks, and I know San Mateo has had a significant number as well. We've also transitioned our healthy families' children, and that's already begun last year, and they're already into the program. So while we talk a lot about our college kids, because those of us who have them think of them quite frequently, especially when we go to open the refrigerator door and nothing is there, we've also started our healthcare program, so that part is done. But let's talk a little bit about, we've talked a lot about enrollment, and there's some ways to do it, but the counties are involved in this too, and I wanted to clarify to you, well, how are our counties involved in this new healthcare reform process? The truth is, as has already been described, Covered California is taking those phone calls, and there are three existing call, or will be three existing customer call centers. Doesn't matter which one you get, you'll make the phone call, and it'll seamlessly get you to whichever operator is available, and they're going to answer those calls. They're then going to go through what they call a quick sort, and if it indicates that that person is actually eligible for Medi-Cal programs, so you won't have to figure it out, or your family, or your friends, they will figure it out, they'll know which language the person would prefer to have this call, and they will send it to one of our county networks. And depending on which area the person lives in, it will go into different, again, this isn't stuff we're going to have to think about, it's all going to happen through all that automation that occurs in today's world. Here locally, it will be the Cal-Win system, and it'll actually use eighteen counties that are going to answer those calls. So ideally, it's going to go to whichever residence, so it'll come to me or Ed's call centers, and we're going to answer the phones. If our call centers are busy, you're not going to be on that lovely line that we've all been on. I had TV disruption last weekend, and I spent hours on a, I won't name it, but I don't thank you for your patience on that call center. You know, we are going to try to answer that call within a, if we can't, as a county, answer that call, it will go to one of our neighboring counties, and they will take the application just like your home. So it won't make any difference to you, it'll then transition to the right county to do the actual maintenance down the road. So we're going to answer those callers with all their needs. So in essence, the quick sort will happen, we're going to answer those calls within thirty seconds, and make a warm transfer between Covered California operator and us. They'll actually transition us over, they'll say hello, this is the next county, and there you begin. If for some reason we really get busy, and this hasn't happened, we could, they could give the county phone number or suggest that you apply online. But I think with the eighteen counties we've got going, our expectations are that we're going to answer that call within thirty seconds eighty percent of the time. I can tell you, Ed and I have been talking this morning, we've already been answering those calls a hundred percent of the time within thirty seconds. So that hasn't been a problem yet, and I don't anticipate that it will be. We haven't talked much about Covered California hours, and I want to let you know that the counties are going to be open those same hours. So their open enrollment period, when those phones are available, are extended hours, including Saturdays. So we will be open beyond that period of time. Covered California's going to be open from eight to eight, Monday through Friday. Our call center will be open beyond that, because you can't take the call and then say, "See you tomorrow." You continue to make that call till you're done. So our concept is, there's no wrong door, no matter what happens, we're going to answer those calls and help those people through. During, on Saturdays, it'll be eight to, actually, for us, seven, they're open from eight to six. There is non-enrollment periods at times too, because even if you did, oh my goodness, it's April 15th and you didn't apply. There'll still be somebody there, the counties, of course, will still be taking enrollment, looking at whether or not you're Medi-Cal, so there'll still be conversations that'll happen with you, even back and forth. But what's important to us, between Covered California and the counties, is that we don't bounce you back and forth. There's nothing worse, right, than when you get to one place and they say, "No, actually, you should be calling the other place." We will handle the calls. So if you happen to call Santa Clara County's call center line, or San Mateo's call center line, we can answer the calls, and we can help you also with all of your questions. You don't, you can call Covered California and begin there, or you can become with your local county also. And one of the things that our slogan here in Santa Clara County has, and I have some brochures in three languages up here, if you didn't happen to get one, is, our concept is now you can say yes. Because suddenly, for the counties, we can say yes to people, we don't have to say no. We're not at the point where, before, we had to say, "Ah, your income isn't quite, sorry." Now, we can say, "No matter what, I have an entree to say yes to you." This is important to us because we're also going to talk about other things. Whereas Covered California is naturally going to talk about healthcare plans, because that's what they do, Santa Clara County and all the counties are going to talk about other things. We may talk to you about CalFresh, and how you're eligible for what CalFresh is now known as food stamps. We may talk to you about other programs that you or your family don't know that you have. So there's still advantages to talking to your local community as well, because we know about all the programs that are, public programs that you're available to, and I would hate to have anybody not get all the services that they're eligible for. Especially for CalFresh, keeping healthy by getting your food stamps is as important as getting your, as getting your healthcare provided as well. And we will certainly be recruiting that and making sure that we look at all your programs when you talk to somebody on our call center. So as I've said, we're suddenly moved from determining eligibility, which is what county workers had to do before, to facilitating enrollment in some way. So we're that single point of contact that will be able to help you all the time. We still get to live with those simplified eligibility rules, which, trust me, makes my workers very happy. And we're going to help you with no wrong door. If you call us, whether you come by phone, in mail, or in person, because it's just too complicated to figure this out, and you want to talk to somebody and you don't know where our certified assist is, you can certainly come to your county offices, and we will help you too. So the best part is too, that we haven't talked, is, it's going to be much easier in the future to get, to get a renewal. Instead of actually having to fill something out and do it by a certain date, or you lose your benefits, for these new programs, it's going to be, we're going to send you something by the mail, and if you say everything still looks the same, then you're not even going to have to send it back to us. So we're very excited about that. That's our way to maintain your services over time, and not have somebody forget to return it and loses, lose their benefits. And I see somebody applying, so she gets how important that is. When we look at the coverage landscape, all of our presenters have talked about this a little bit, we're involved in all these tiers, and we can help you with all the tiers, but certainly, there are specifics there, and I'm going to pass the baton to Ed to talk about some of the more specifics.
Okay, thank you. So I know that we're running a little bit late here, and I recently was able to participate in a very similar panel, and the Q&amp;A portion was very well received. So I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as I can so we can get to that. I think there's a lot of folks with questions out there. And of course, if I miss something, or perhaps don't provide enough information, I'd be more than happy to answer the question during the panel or afterwards also, as I'm sure Denise would also. So one of the things I did want to make sure we talk about, though, is Medi-Cal and the expansion of Medi-Cal, because it really plays a very important part within the Implementation of Affordable Care Act, particularly for, as a safety net for the low-income families and individuals. For the counties, it's very exciting, because what we're seeing is beyond just a streamlining and expansion, but also a simplification, and really a broadening of that door that allows people to come into the Medi-Cal program, which, for those of you guys that are not familiar with it, most of the Medi-Cal program that's going to be included under the ACA is full-scope, no-share-cost Medi-Cal, meaning that a person in the lower-income tiers wouldn't have to pay copay, wouldn't have to pay deductibles in order to get access to healthcare services. So for all intents and purposes, this new expanded Medi-Cal has been referred to as MAGI Medi-Cal, and that term is Modified Adjusted Gross Income, it's a term that's used in helping determine income, it's a term that's stuck with the expanded Medi-Cal. To be able to qualify for these programs, you have to be between nineteen and sixty-four years of age, either a U.S. citizen or a legal permanent resident, not pregnant, not eligible for Medicare Part A or B. There is a five percent disregard, so really, the income level for Medi-Cal is a hundred and thirty-eight percent of the FPL. And also, there are programs for children with income up to two hundred and fifty percent FPL through the state. So another important item that I want to mention, and this is something that comes up in a lot of questions, is that current Medi-Cal, as you know, it will continue to exist also. And so for folks that are on Medi-Cal today, first, don't worry, you're not going to lose your Medi-Cal. If anything, you may be able to access more complete and less expensive services as a result of ACA implementation. But traditional Medi-Cal, as we know it today, will exist, and there are categories that are going to still be covered, so long-term care, seniors and persons with disabilities, the Medicare Savings Program, which some of you may be familiar with, all these programs stay. And if you have questions, there's always the county there for you to ask questions and help you through these processes. Another area that's, especially when we're working with our community groups, that comes up a lot, is the undocumented population. And one of the things that's changed very recently for us, and I think is very exciting, is that the expanded Medi-Cal program will also be extended to the undocumented population as it is today in Medi-Cal, which is that they're able to receive a form of restricted Medi-Cal, which gives them access to emergency services and also pregnancy-related services. So that expanded one hundred and thirty-eight percent FPL, along with the removal of the linkage requirements, also is going to pertain to the undocumented population. Behind that, counties have actually implemented county health insurance programs. So in San Mateo County, that program, which is really funded through the county itself, is the ACE program, and that program's available to anyone. So for example, San Mateo County would look to combine both the Medi-Cal program and the ACE program to actually provide some form of health coverage for even the undocumented population. Now, another thing to note, though, for the undocumented population is that they'll be exempt from the mandate. MAGI Medi-Cal income, along with the income requirements for all the programs, pretty similar. They're going to be based on household size and expected tax filing status for the coming years. One of the things that we think has been very important within the ACA has been the requirement for any entity that's doing eligibility to first look within its systems to see if they can determine the requirements for qualification before asking someone for, to provide these paper verifications. So in the case of the system that is being used by both the county and Covered California, there's actually a federal hub that we are able to request information from or request clarification on income. And if we're able to get a compatible response, we're actually able to use that as determination for income or residency, without having to ask for paper verifications, which, you know, for counties who've been doing this for a long time, we can tell you, it's the verification piece that becomes very cumbersome and oftentimes leads to people not being able to successfully complete an application or stay on a program. California residency is actually one of the key criteria for Medi-Cal eligibility. It's residency, income, and citizenship status. The systems that are being built today are actually being built to first query all of the different databases to see, one, we can determine your residency without having to ask you for verifications. At the end of the day, though, if we can't do that, there's always the opportunity to provide those verifications to us. Citizenship, a couple of things that it's important here. To be eligible for full Medi-Cal, an individual must be a citizen or a legal permanent resident. As we mentioned before, there is restricted Medi-Cal for those folks that are undocumented. Medicaid has had a five-year bar for legal residents, but California as a state for a long time has actually gone above and beyond that and made sure that they, the policy of inclusion continues, and that'll continue with the expanded Medi-Cal. So legal immigrants will still have access to the Medi-Cal program. And then there's also going to be the introduction of self-attestation, which in some of the different programs would allow a person to be able to demonstrate their, or to give their income, and in certain cases where they're unable to, or the burden of trying to prove that income is going to be too difficult, we'd have alternatives that would allow them to self-attest to the income that they're receiving so that we can get these folks on programs. And I don't know if this has really been, well, it has been mentioned, but you know, we've been open for a week now. The counties in Covered California have actually been enrolling folks, and we're very excited about having been able to actually see all the work we've been doing for the last few months actually come to fruition. And we, as counties, have really enjoyed being able to say yes to folks when they call us, when they walk in our door, when they apply online to the counties. We've also been very fortunate to work closely with Covered California to create this seamless process on the back end, so that at the end of the day, it doesn't matter really who you call, because we're going to do everything we can to get you on, without having to make you call somebody else, or go to another office, or hang up and call back later, so. I'll go ahead and end it there so that we can go ahead and go to the QA session, so, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, if you do have questions, please fill out the slip. If you need another slip, raise your hand, we'll get those to you. Also, we're, we will take questions for about forty-five minutes. We promised we'd end at noon, but the speakers will still be available, and we also have a group of certified educators who are here, and if they could wave their hands or, so these folks over here are going to be available afterwards outside in the lobby and can answer very specific and personal questions that you might have, and help you get moving. So we want to thank you for being here today. The, I'm going to ask our panelists to be brief in our responses as best we can, so that we can get to as many questions as possible. And let me start with, if we could get someone to respond to the, "How will the Affordable Care Act affect mental health coverage?" Maybe Drew?
I actually think that would be. I mean, I think the quick answer is that if you're in, in both Medi-Cal and in coverage, mental health is a required benefit. And again, we were very pleased that the Assembly and Senate and the Governor in the budget this year did actually vote to augment mental health and substance abuse services in the Medi-Cal program as part of the budget for this year. But it also is one of those ten benefits that Kerry and Drew had in their slides as a basic benefit. It really is actually a revolution in terms of being able to access coverage for, not only the insured population, but the uninsured population to those types of services. I don't know if the county folks want to talk about some of the ways they're integrating that, those services into care, but that's also something that's ongoing as well.
I think it's fair to say for all the counties, there's always been an effort to integrate those services. I think what we're really seeing here that's a benefit is that we're actually going to be able to provide more funding for integrating those services. And the other piece is the substance abuse. Both of those have been really tremendous additions to the slew of services that folks will be able to receive access to, or get access to.
And just before the ACA, you know, these types of services were only provided, you know, for seriously, you know, ill who needed to have a mental health, you know, service. And now, there's, there can be more of a preventative approach to, you know, mental health and those types of things.
Great, thank you. And I know that was a, I don't know how difficult, but if we could keep the answers, maybe one person could answer the question and just be precise to the question, and that way we can keep moving, because we have a lot of, we have a lot of questions here. How do we sign up a college student living in a different area that is a dependent? Whose income do we input, students or parents?
Income is based on the household tax filing, so if the student is claimed as a dependent on your taxes, then the household tax income would determine eligibility. The student would have to be a permanent resident of California, even if they were attending a university out of state. I would also just like to note that, under the law, young adults up to the age of twenty-six are able to stay on their parents' plan, which is a big improvement as a part of the law.
So I've got a great follow-up question to that. Someone in the audience says that they'll turn twenty-six next August. So, or, and so they, do they need to enroll now for when they're no longer eligible for to be under their parents, or do they wait till next year? When should they be enrolling?
No, they don't. I think that's a qualifying event, so the open enrollment period is, you have to enroll in the open enrollment periods, but there are ways to get in, get in outside the open enrollment periods if you have a life, a life-change event. That includes losing a job, losing group coverage, divorce, things like that, graduation.
Next question is, how low is the income level for single adults applying to Covered California where they must apply to Medi- where they must apply to Medi-Cal instead? And there was another follow-up to the age question, are twenty-five-year-olds covered in family plans or twenty-six? And I think we, so where is that cutoff range?
So, the the cutoff right now is is one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level for the Medi-Cal program. If I understand correctly, a person would not be eligible necessarily for a subsidy if that person was eligible for Medi-Cal.
That's right.
And then are twenty-five-year-olds covered in family plans or twenty-six-year-olds?
It's up to the age of twenty-six.
When you reach twenty-six?
That's right.
That's it. Very good. Thank you. So, we've got somebody in the audience who likes their current doctor. They will be enrolling probably through a silver plan. Will they be able to keep that existing doctor?
There's a very good chance of that. There is a function on our website currently where you can search by doctor, by hospital, by specialist to see if, in fact, they are participating in one of the plans that's available to you.
Another question, other than the choice of providers for any given plan, bronze, silver, gold, or platinum, are there any difference in the benefits that the insurance company offers?
All of the insurance companies are required to offer the standardized benefits. What Covered California did is selected a benchmark plan, which was the Kaiser Small Group Thirty Plan. So all plans have to offer that essential set of benefits. Above and beyond that, different plans do offer different services, and so you'll be able to shop based on the services, above and beyond those essential-based services that are available to you.
But I think the comparison really is a price comparison, where you can make that apples-to-apples comparison, the network in terms of, does that plan have the doctor or hospital, and you can use that search tool to really find out, and you can make a trade-off. If there's a certain provider that you really may, you may have to go for a different plan that may be the absolute cheapest, but but that's a, that's a criteria that, a trade-off that you can make. And then also, any information that you can get on quality, not at this moment, but hopefully later on in the iterations of Covered California, there will be quality ratings alongside the the plan so that people can make, make, make decisions based on cost and quality and customer service rather than on how confusing the benefit package is. That's the, that's the goal.
So, if I want to find out whether a doctor I want or a network I want to use, the providers, the hospitals, I go to the website, as I understand. But some folks say that there's been some difficulty accessing some of that information on the website, wanting to know, you know, how are things moving in terms of the website? Are there any glitches? And because of any issues or problems with the website, would it make more sense to wait to enroll, or should I try to maneuver through this now?
That's a great question. I do understand that that search functionality for doctors and providers had been somewhat delayed on the website. I like to think that they were not glitches, but they were an overwhelming support of folks who are interested in what we have to offer, and we're extremely happy about that. The, I I got an email late last night that the, some of those functionalities were added over the weekend. We are scheduling maintenance to the website in order to continue to increase our bandwidth and add these features. I I just would like to reiterate that we really do have a, about a two-and-a-half-month period to get that coverage started on January first and a six-month period to enroll. So, giving it about a week, I think, every day over the last week, performance got better on the site and through our call centers. Now, I wouldn't encourage you to wait. Obviously, if you're ready, we think you should do it right away, but but we are improving as we move along.
I mean, I would just say, I mean, this is a big purchase. This is a, the equivalent purchase, if you're paying full freight for a family, this is the equivalent purchase of buying a car. It's, for most families, it's the second biggest purchase they have after their home. And so, we expect that this is like, you know, you don't buy the car in the first visit to the lot. You want to do some comparison, you want to kick the tires, and we want the information to be out there because you're making life decisions based on your access to affordable care, but I I think the, when you press the buy button, you want to make sure you have all the information. So if that's important to you, wait, it is, my understanding is that it will certainly be up by Monday, is, I think, the thing that I
I agree.
I got from my colleagues.
There have been numerous healthcare hotlines advertised on television. Are they legitimate?
I would like to say that, to get the best information on Covered California, you would want to dial into our one-eight-hundred number, but I do know that there are, and our one-eight-hundred numbers, I know that county folks mentioned, streamline into all of our partners, so I think it's the best and right place to start.
I would also say, though, if you're in doubt, if you want to call your county, local county, or walk into your county offices, that's the other obvious safe place. So those are the two safe places, and that's where I would recommend you go.
Yeah, and just make sure to look for the logo. I mean, look for the Covered California logo, look for the county logo. You know, we're really concerned, as other folks are, about, you know, the potential for misinformation, and so knowing, you know, when you see that Covered California logo, then, you know, you should, you know that there's real help there.
So this question regarding folks who work less than thirty hours, so they're not currently potentially covered by their employer, how will they get health insurance? Will they be part of the Covered California, the individual marketplace? So if you work less than thirty hours, how does that work?
So, it's not about hours, it's about income. So regardless of whether you are, what your hours are, your eligibility for Covered California is number one, do you have employer-based coverage, and is it, and is it affordable? If your employer-based, if if your, if your employer does not offer you employer-based coverage, then certainly you're eligible for the exchange and any income subsidies available in the exchange. If your employer-based coverage is, if your employer offers you coverage, but it's more than eight percent of your income in order to pay the, your share of premium, then you can also go go and turn that down and go into the exchange and be available for subsidies in the exchange. So there's an escape valve if that's the case, and that happens to be the situation for many people who are part-time, because they, by definition, have a lower income and a share of premium could be prohibitive. But it's not based on hours, it's based on income, and again, this threshold of the eight percent affordability test for employer-based coverage.
If a person purchases a cheap or a cheaper plan the first year, can they switch to a more expensive plan during the next enrollment period? Let's say their medical needs change and their expenses are increasing, can they, can they change?
You got it exactly right. The change can be made, but only during the open enrollment period. So if you select a bronze plan in May, you can't bump that up to platinum, but in that next open enrollment period between October and December, you can make that change.
The, does the current federal government shutdown have any impact on the enrollment process here in California?
No.
I like that one.
We all have staff working today. We all have staff working today, taking those calls, whether it be the counties or the Covered California. We're open for business.
California always does it right. How are the homeless being helped to apply for Covered California for their medical expansion? Is there, is it an outreach issue that we're trying to?
So, one of the things that we're looking at, especially when we're working with our shelters, which the counties have partnerships with in many cases, is the, is the income level, of course, and if that makes them eligible for a Medi-Cal program or one of the programs of the Covered California. If they're Medi-Cal eligible, the biggest change for us is that it, single adults, medically indigent adults, are now eligible for Medi-Cal. So we're actually working directly with the shelters in San Mateo County, as I imagine many counties are, to identify these folks and to assist them in enrolling on these programs. One of the things that's important to note is that a county worker is able to enroll a person on any of the programs that are available, whether it's Medi-Cal or the programs that are offered through Covered California. They're also certified and trained through Covered California. So, we hope that that acts as a really good safety net for individuals regardless, again, of where we're working with them from, where they're coming from, or what their income is.
And I would add that we're working with those folks to add them into this low-income health program now, so their benefits for those, for those homeless individuals, we've been actively working with all those kinds of organizations, or I see some of our nonprofit folks are here today, certainly working with them to help those families, get, those individuals get on benefits now. So they're not waiting till January, we're helping the homeless now.
Denise, perhaps a follow-up, what what will happen to the undocumented worker today in terms of coverage at all? Is it?
That's dependent on, we will continue certain Medi-Cal programs that are funded through the state, but Covered California, they're not currently available for. That's a federal issue.
Just to specify, just to clarify that, if an undocumented worker works for a small business and that small business, you know, opts to buy purchase coverage through the exchange, you know, there, it is not based on citizenship status. That, that, you know, company can choose to purchase insurance for their workers, and that person would be covered as part of the, you know, employee from that organization.
And then, and then finally, I just want to acknowledge that the counties that are represented here have, you know, done, taken an extra step. Frankly, the, I mean, there will be remaining uninsured after this transition. There's potentially going to be as many, we're going to dramatically reduce the number of uninsured from seven million people plus to three million, and if we do an amazing job of outreach and enrollment, maybe even, maybe even two million. But there's still going to be remaining uninsured that includes an undocumented population. I think we should recognize the counties that are represented here for their leadership. There's a handful, there's several counties that do provide some basic medical home for the remaining insured, including the undocumented, including these counties, including San Francisco and LA. There are other counties in California that do not, and so this is unfortunately one of those situations where the, where you live has an impact on what access you have for that specific population. And so, and that's something that we're working at at the statewide level, at advocacy groups, along with CPEN.
So, speaking of where you live, if, if someone has a, a son or a daughter who is going to school out of state, is there any difference in terms of the cost of coverage or premiums on a state-by-state basis, and where would it be best for them to get coverage?
The answer to that question is that the coverage comes from the state of permanent residency. So if you are a student going to school at Arizona State, but your permanent residence is in California with your parents, then your coverage would come from California. Covered California does offer one multi-state plan for these types of examples, but as far as coverage between state to state, I can't comment.
I mean, I think, at the end of the day, the important thing is the network, right? Is the, is what access to doctors and hospitals you have, and so to the extent that there is a student who is living in two different states, one at school, one at home, the question is, where do you want the network of doctors and hospitals to be grounded? That doesn't mean that those insurers wouldn't cover in an emergency something that's happening in the other location, but you'd have to make the decision there. What the price would be varies on a whole set of factors, including cost of living and, you know, and the level of competition in that given area, and so I, there's no blanket issue. California is sort of in the middle, there are states that are more expensive, states are lower, less expensive. It's more about, again, where do you want your primary care doctor to be located?
Someone may have a choice between Medi-Cal and one of the metal-tier plans. In that situation, is there an advantage to choosing one over the other, and why?
I, excuse me if I misspeak, I'm going to take a stab at this, and then I, hopefully my county friends can help me. If you are eligible for Medi-Cal, for low- or no-cost Medi-Cal, you would not qualify for premium assistance in the exchange. So you couldn't, you certainly could purchase a plan in the exchange, but not with the benefit of the premium assistance that's offered? Does that cover that answer?
That's, that's accurate, but there's also folks that are on a share-of-cost Medi-Cal today, which are folks who are typically higher income. And one of the things that's been discussed, and I'd say is pretty likely, is that folks that are on a share-of-cost Medi-Cal would not be meeting the federal government's definition of minimum
Essential benefits.
Essential benefits, meaning that they would not be meeting the mandate. And in those cases, I believe that, based on their income, they would likely be eligible for full programs through the Covered California program.
So, I've been told that, at some point, if I don't get insurance, that there's going to be some kind of a penalty or fee for not having insurance. If that's correct, when does that occur?
The, the penalty for not having insurance starting this year is ninety-five dollars for an individual or one percent of your income, whichever is higher. There has been a grace period extended around our open enrollment period this year, so the penalty would not start being assessed until April of 2014, and would be payable upon filing of your taxes at the end of the tax year.
The other thing is that there are exemptions to that mandate, if, if the coverage, if you do have to end up paying more than eight percent of your income for coverage, let's say you're over four-hundred percent of poverty, but because of whatever situation that is that ends up being the case, or, so there are certain exemptions from, from that. It's ninety-five dollars that first year, it does grow in future years to up to two-and-a-half percent of income. And for some people, that may be the viable option, because it is, it's probably cheaper to pay the penalty than have, not have, than to buy coverage, but the problem is then you don't have coverage. And, and fundamentally, we do think that most people want coverage, the, you know, no longer living sicker, dying younger, being one emergency away from financial ruin, and, and, and I think that's the, the benefit of having, having the coverage. But for those people who simply can't make it work, that is an option, and you just chew it up on your taxes, as you do with doing your other deductibles and changes on your taxes.
If you have coverage under the exchange and you've purchased it and you're going forward with it, can a doctor bill the individual for the amount that the insurance company determines is excess, that they pay this amount, and then the service was greater than that? Can they bill the patient for that?
There is existing, so this actually has nothing to do with the Affordable Care Act, there is existing balanced billing protections, consumer protections in California law. California has some pretty good consumer protections with regard to, and that, that's something that if you are in that situation, you should file a complaint at the Department of Managed Healthcare or the, or the Department of Insurance, which are the two regulators that regulate insurance in the state of California. But there are, California has existing consumer protections with regard to what's called balanced billing.
And they will apply to this new coverage that people have here?
Yes.
And there's nothing different that would be created?
That's right.
For the enrollment period that's just begun, and will go through March, is the income levels, the subsidies available, are they based on income from 2012 or 2013 income?
That is a really great question. They are based on current income, and so should you apply for coverage through Covered California and then in six months have income change in your life, whether it be it go up or go down? It would be extremely important that you contact Covered California to report your new income so that the amount of subsidy you receive can be modified. Should you have a, a growth in your income over the year and not report it, when you filed your taxes at the end of the year, they would have to reconcile that excess premium assistance that you received during the year.
If my employer offers a compliant insurance plan, but it's too expensive, and I qualify for a subsidy, can I get a subsidized plan through Covered California? And then if I'm laid off and I choose to go into Cobra, can I later switch to Covered California policy?
So this goes back to what Mr. Wright was saying earlier about that eight percent of income determination. So if the coverage that is offered to you costs more than eight percent of your income, then you would be able to come to Covered California and receive a subsidy. However, if it fell underneath that threshold, you could certainly purchase in the exchange, but not with the benefit of a subsidy. The second question is if you were laid off from your job, you would, you would be given a sixty-day enrollment window, a special enrollment, so for all life-changing events, which is getting married, getting divorced, losing a job, having a child, et cetera, you would be able to purchase coverage in the exchange in a special sixty-day enrollment window, but after that window closes, you'd have to wait till the next.
And I would say for, I mean, Cobra will still exist, and here in California, we also have Cal-Cobra, which provides some broader extensions, but to be honest, for the vast majority of people, Covered California will be a better deal. You know, Cobra is notoriously expensive, because you're basically paying full freight without the employer contribution for that coverage, and so it will still be there as an option, but many, but many people, and, you know, by definition, you've probably been laid off from a job, so you probably have reduced income at that point, and so in, in most cases, Covered California will be the better option to go to, to, to get those subsidies and, and, and maybe to get also maybe a, a plan that's more aligned with your, your new income.
I'm glad you said that and not me.
That's why I'm here.
I had a question about Cobra, but I think you've answered that. Is Medicare supplemental insurance offered and included in Covered California?
No.
If you're in Medicare, you're in Medicare. If you're in Medicare, you're in Medicare. Enjoy Medicare. This is, again, the changes in Medicare are improvements to prescription drugs and preventative health, but if you're, but this is really for those who don't have access to Medicare, including a lot of those potential early retirees who are waiting to get into Medicare. Now you can get in and not be denied for pre-existing conditions or charged because of, or charged differently because of your health status.
I just wanted one thing also, and that is that the Medicare savings program will continue also.
Will income be reviewed on an annual basis, as is done with Medicare Part B through Covered California?
It will, yeah, there will be, we, as part of our process, will be checking in with folks to make sure there hasn't been any life-changing or income-changing event throughout the year to ensure that the amount of subsidy that you're receiving is consistent with your income.
Yes, so you will verify that on an annual basis?
Yeah, and consumers will, you'll get a notice, you know, if there is a change. I mean, this is really important, you know, working with, on regulations with Covered California, that you will get a notice if there is a significant income change that, you know, you may want to revisit your tax credit that you're taking.
So you said enjoy Medicare if you have it. What if you're over 65 and you have assets that are over the limit? Is there a way that you can get covered?
If you're over 65, you get Medicare.
Yeah.
Assets are, there's a test, so there's two things. One is that Medicare doesn't have an asset test. You get it if you're over 65, with some exceptions, but Medi-Cal has traditionally had an asset test, and so this gives me an opportunity to talk about the fact that the asset test is eliminated in Medi-Cal, which is a really big deal. And just for those who don't know, there was this prohibited, there was this limit on people being able to get Medicaid coverage if they had assets of more than $2,000. Advocates like myself really didn't like that because it was administrative barrier for low-income people to try to prove all the assets they didn't have, the paperwork, et cetera. But it also was really bad social policy because in every other sector of life, we encourage people to have more than three months of rent in the bank, but then we say, if you do that, we're going to take away your healthcare. No more. The asset test is eliminated, it's a much more streamlined application and people can get coverage. You still do need to go through an asset test in California for long-term care services, which is maybe what the question is pointing to, but for standard Medi-Cal benefits, that is eliminated. That's a huge benefit, not just from an access point of view, but also from a social policy, having people build savings and lift themselves out of poverty point of view. The changes to, start in January, the elimination of the asset test, the expansion to childless adults, all start in January, although people can pre-enroll now.
You can enroll now.
Especially with the low-income health programs that these counties have helped pioneer.
If you were to sign up for, through Covered California today, when do you begin paying your premiums?
You have to make the first month's premium payment by December 27th, 25th, 27th, in order to have your coverage begin effective January 1st and then every month thereafter.
I have a question about PPO or HMO coverage. And will PPO plans be available through Medi-Cal and available through the various metal tier levels? Or will I be forced into an HMO?
PPOs are available on the exchange throughout the different metal tiers, depending on where you live and what plans are available.
Right. No, and I mean, there's also different type, I mean, there are different types of structures. There's HMO, there's PPO, there's also cost sharing and co-insurance. And I want to, again, I can say this because Drew can't, I want to put a warning about the co-insurance piece, which is that if you, if it says, you know, a $20 copay is a $20 copay, a 20% co-insurance, you have no idea what that could be because it's 20% of what? And I don't, people who don't have lots of interaction with the healthcare system don't recognize that some of these bills can be very, very big. And so 20% of a big number is still a big number. And so just, it's a viable option, people should take advantage of it if it makes sense, but just be warned that that, that if you are paying a 20% cost sharing, that's 20% of that hospital bill, 20% of that doctor visit, which could be hundreds or thousands of dollars. Now, all the plans do have the ultimate out-of-pocket maximum cap of $6,000, $6,000-plus for an individual, so that no one should be in a place where they're going into medical bankruptcy, but it's just something to be aware about, about the difference between cost sharing and co-insurance.
This is a only-in-Silicon Valley question. I work for a startup and currently do not have an income, but as soon as funding comes in, we will have an income, but do not know when that will be. So what kind of insurance should I get?
Given the question, you would start out being Medi-Cal eligible, and then as that income grew over time, you would transition into the exchange should the income meet that threshold?
Right. I mean, actually, this is not a, this is actually a good thing, right? I mean, we actually want this to be a safety net so that in those times, if you're between jobs, you actually have access to coverage until you get back on your feet or until, you know, you make, you strike gold in the California way. I have a friend who, totally unrelated to what I do, who's asking me advice, and I actually told him about this thing. And he says, well, I pay $750 a month for an Anthem Blue Cross plan. He immediately went onto the website, found that for a platinum plan, he could get it for 500 bucks, so he would immediately save $250. And because he's working on a startup and has a minimal income, he's probably not going to be in Medi-Cal, but he'll actually be paying $200 a month, so it's $500 a month savings. And so he's ecstatic and was one of the people trying to crash the system on Tuesday.
Currently, with Kaiser, we're paying an individual rate, which is quite a bit higher than Kaiser group rates. How will Kaiser premiums under the exchange be impacted? Is there a way to, for me to essentially reduce what I'm paying now as an individual to Kaiser, either at a group rate or some other lower rate?
So when we negotiated our rates with the health plans, we used small group rates as the benchmark to see how we did in the individual market. And they were somewhere between 1 and 30% less than what the small group market was offering, which was, we thought was a great sign that we had negotiated really great rates in the exchange. So given that scenario, I would encourage you to go onto the website, use the shop and compare tool, see what's available to you in your county. I'm relatively confident that you would find a significant savings there, especially if you're individual, if the rate you're paying now is significantly higher than the small group market.
The, we, let me just say, the balance of the questions that we have, as the staff has looked at them, kind of feel are very, very technical and personal. So if we have not read your question or answered it, again, our panelists will be available and we do have the three educators available. Please take those more specific questions, technical questions that we've not yet raised, to those folks, you get them answered before you leave here today. With that, I have one final question, and that is the 800 number. When's the best time to call so I have the shortest wait?
That's a great question.
It really is a great question. And at Covered California, we know on our Day One and Day Two, we did have some significant wait times. I visited our Rancho Cordova Call Center on Wednesday around 4:00 PM. We were down to three-minute call times. We were, we are actively increasing our bandwidth, so we think as time goes on, those wait times will go down. We don't have analytics yet, however, on the, those tiny windows of time in which you might have the best luck. But this is something we're working on very hard. We don't want, you know, as the county said, we don't want people hearing that. Thank you for your patience because no one feels, you know, happy to have those waits. But, so we're working on it, and I think it's getting much, much better, even in just our first week.
But the truth is, if you call the counties or drop by, you're not waiting.
30 seconds, right?
30 seconds.
We're held to 30 seconds, they're not yet.
Depends on which county. So I can tell you Sam, Santa Clara's. We have a 408 number that's local, that you can call Monday through Friday, and they can direct you to, whether you're appropriate for Services Now or for these kinds of programs. And that's 758-3800. And I do have flyers up here, you can pick up for any language, so you can take that home.
And for San Mateo County, we have a 1-800 number, and that's 1-800-223-8383. But I do want to, I do want to mention, I've run call centers for a few years now, and we've worked with a lot of these eligibility systems in the past. And I think the, what Covered California is trying to do is massive. And we've worked with them this week, and over the course of this week, we've seen really tremendous response and improvement. And we're getting people enrolled, they're getting people enrolled. Given what they're trying to undertake, I think they've actually done a remarkable job in how well they've been able to recover from these, you know, huge numbers of people that wanted to visit the site, which I think says a lot about too, about how important this is.
Absolutely.
And I can only imagine that we're going to see continued improvement in every area as we go forward, so.
The good news is the counties and the state are working together.
So San Mateo, 1-800-223-8383.
But.
8383.
But just, just a plug though, to remind folks that, you know, you can call the Covered California telephone number and you will automatically, you know, they will figure out which county you're from, and if you're eligible for Medi-Cal, you will be transferred to the call center as well. So, I mean, good to have the local number, but just, you know, know that what's great about the Affordable Care Act and where we are now is that all these systems are linked in ways that, you know, maybe they weren't before. And Covered California is really a place you can go to have that conversation and then be routed.
And, I mean, I would just say that, just people should recognize that there are five ways to be, to sign up for coverage. You know, one is online, you can do it all online if you want, if you're so inclined, and that actually probably, in Silicon Valley, that is probably more true than most other places. Most people will want somebody to hold their hand through the process, and so you can do the call center, you can do the counties and the county workers, there's also agents and brokers, there's also community groups that have been trained to be certified application counselors. So you have options for entry. And then, again, what we're very excited about here in this area is that if, the counties will also figure out if you're eligible for Medi-Cal, if you're eligible for Covered California, and if you're not for either, there still will be something available for you, which is a really important piece of what we've been able to do locally here.
With that, I want to thank our panelists for being here. I want to thank, I want to thank the educators who are outside waiting to take your more specific questions, the city of Mountain View for allowing us to use this space. Senator Hill and I could not do our jobs without a great staff team who support us and help make events like this possible, so I want to thank the staff team and particularly from my staff, Joey Vaughn, for their work in making this happen. And most importantly, I want to thank all of you for being here, and for those of you who will watch this on the cable television. I hope that this has been helpful, that we are moving, as has been said, into a very new and exciting era with healthcare coverage in this country. Some major and significant changes. The enrollment period that has just begun is the beginning of a new day. And so I'm hopeful that the information you received has been helpful. Again, we have experts outside for further questions, but you've got 800 numbers, call, get your specific questions answered, so that you get the best healthcare coverage that you deserve. Jerry?
Well, thank you, Richard. Thanks for partnering today and presenting this because it really is a great opportunity. I am always amazed at the wealth of information and knowledge that comes from the panelists. And, you know, there was not one question that stumped them, and they always had, you know, much more information to provide that they could kind of pull out of their memory. It's very impressive and thank you for that. And thank you to my staff, Jeff and Lisa over there. And thank you to everyone, and especially to the Mountain View City Council and to the Mountain View staff for allowing us to be here today and to participate and to use the facility. So look forward to seeing you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I actually got goosebumps when you were talking.
Oh, thank you.